Okay, welcome to the November 1st Special Board of Select and Sewer Commissioners meeting, all members are present. The first item on the agenda, and only, is interview candidate for building commissioners position. So, sir, you can come up and just identify yourself, if you could just tell us a little about yourself, and then we may have questions for you.
Thank you, my name's Joe Acheu, currently the building commissioner in the town of Northborough. I've been in construction for over twenty years, been an inspector for at least six or seven now, moved my way up through the right end of it being a building official, started my career as an alternate for the town of Northbridge, which is where I live, while going to college, I went back later in life. I got a job working in the city of Worcester, which is very, I'm a step closer as a local inspector, and there was a huge learning curve when I started working there, everything between commercial and residential, you know, school, everything, it was an amazing learning curve to get over there, but some very valuable lessons learned while I was there. Once I was there, I was working part-time for the town of Northborough during that same time, at one point, I had that, my commissioner's certification, the town of Northborough offered me a full-time position after their commissioner left, and I took that as my first position as commissioner. Worked in the town of Northborough in total two and a half years, better opportunity showed up in the town of Berlin, so I took that position, and I've been there ever since. I am working currently part-time in the town of Acton, and I'm looking to replace that, hopefully with this position, and work in both communities, both Berlin and West Boyleson. On a personal note, I'm a father, have two boys, ages fourteen and fifteen, both in high school, so I'm a family man, come from a good-sized family myself, so, deep-rooted in the area, grew up in Grafton.
Okay, now, and I think Mr. Acheu gave us all copies of his resume, some information about the position here in West Boyleson, and some information about the facility management outline that he offers, so, how about one of, I think one of the questions, and then we'll go on to questions, is, how do you feel you can work both towns? Because how many hours do you work in?
Forty hours in Berlin.
Forty hours, and then we're looking at?
Thirty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, one thing that is nice with my schedule in Berlin, is that it's a flexible schedule, so, I was asked to work forty hours, anything I work over forty hours is comp time, and as long as I am getting my inspections done, and meeting the customer service needs of the town and community and so forth, I have a chance to adjust my schedule as needed. Currently, right now, with the employment situation that I'm in, I'm working in Berlin and in Acton, so I go in the morning from about five AM, work from five to seven-thirty in Berlin, then I head to Acton, I work in Acton from eight AM to noon, then back in Berlin for twelve-thirty, and I'm in Berlin until, into the evening, so I work until about seven-thirty, eight o'clock every night, from five to seven-thirty, so that's not an unusual work schedule for me, I'm used to working the long hours, so I don't have any problems working the two jobs, working the extra hours. As you can see, the hours that I've submitted to you, the way I could help benefit the town of West Boyleson, is I could offer hours, two, maybe up to three days a week, from seven to nine, Monday, Wednesday, possibly Friday, to go and meet with contractors, and do some plan review in the morning, meet with internal staff, make sure that the office is running appropriately, and that things are good to go for the day, also being able to keep in constant communication by cellphone, email, text messaging, all that throughout the day. I am eligible to be here at any point in time, twenty-four-seven, if there is a time-sensitive project, or if there's an emergency that arises, I'm only about fifteen minutes from Berlin to here, in the time that I checked even tonight on my way over, so, easily enough, I can get in here, get the inspections done if need be on an emergency-type basis. Then the rest of the hours, of course, would be after my hours in Berlin, would be from one-thirty to seven-thirty, or seven o'clock at night. Being here in the afternoons and into the evenings, I notice it allows time during the early parts of the afternoon to continue with inspections, meeting with individuals that are contractors and whatnot, plan review, and then offering hours later into the evening allows for the homeowner, that doesn't get a chance to get out during the day, and get in during normal business hours, to come in and make an appointment and see me. I've noticed that, because that's what's worked out well in Berlin right now, people enjoy having the opportunity to catch me at a little bit later in the day, so they're not taking time off of their work to come in and meet with me. Of course, emails, calls, things of that nature, I followed up on right away, within that same day, if not within twenty-four hours, so that's the kind of schedule I'd be looking at providing with West Boyleson, and maintaining Berlin, so Berlin hours would be standard to five to one, and then, of course, one-thirty to seven, or seven-thirty here, in just those few days a week, where I would be in here from seven to nine, Monday, Wednesday, and possible Friday.
Okay, and then, how about like night meetings and things like that?
So, I already looked up the night schedules for the ZBA hearings that you have, my understanding is that would be the primary one I would be going to, that does not conflict with any of my evening obligations in Berlin. Currently, right now in Berlin, I attend some selectman meetings, I go to planning board, ZBA, every once in a while a conservation, or a board of health. Right now, Berlin is a little unique, we don't have a town planner, or a town engineer, or a board of health agent, it's either committees, board members that are from town that operate those, and the board of health, we use the SHOBA as our regional, so they're only in the office a little bit. So, right now, I'm acting kind of as liaisons to coordinate between these boards, doesn't necessarily, I meet those boards on their meeting nights, sometimes they'll pose questions to me, and I just help relay the questions, because it's difficult for these boards and committees where they don't have emails to talk to one another, so I kind of help mitigate that situation. The only other thing that I am on, is I'm the liaison for the energy committee that we have established in Berlin. Again, looking at the nights that those meetings fall in, they're all past the seven PM time, so, and I'm used to those too, you know, sometimes I'll go from seven-thirty to eleven o'clock at night, and I'm right back in at five AM, so, again, it's been a schedule that I'm used to, that I've been doing for quite some time, and it doesn't really bother me, it works well.
Okay, just any questions from the board?
So, commercial, Berlin does quite a bit of commercial?
Yes.
And, so a set of plans, commercial plans is obviously a lot longer than a residential, where's that time coming? When you're not, say, if we had to hear, and you needed, how long is, I don't know, set of plans, I don't know, what they build in Berlin lately that's?
So, we have a hotel that's just finishing up. I have a large project that just came in, I maintain the thirty-day, for large projects, I maintain the thirty-day, you know, limit, as far as the state statute says I have thirty days to review. So, again, I have a large project that just came into town, it's twenty-one buildings, it's two-hundred-and-four apartments with a clubhouse, pump house, garages, and so forth, seven three-story apartment buildings, different configurations, so, going through that, and I've been working on that three and a half weeks, and I have almost every building set to go, so, I move right along.
Impressive.
Raj, oh, I'm sorry, John, do you have another question?
I'll think of it, I'll think of it.
Okay.
Can you tell me something about your facilities manager, or facilities-related experience?
Sure, so, right now, Berlin is combining my job duties, and I'm sharing them with the Department of Public Works Director, so we split. DPW does the maintenance of the buildings, I do the facilities management portion of the buildings, we just implemented an analytical software program that talks to our HVAC equipment for regulating certain buildings, and working with the heating and cooling and so forth. We've come to notice with a lot of things that are going on, the facilities themselves are starting to break down, you know, the facility's twenty years old, so isn't the equipment that goes with it, things are starting to need to be replaced, so we have to put in a capital improvement plan for each individual building, to meet the needs of that building, and the future needs of that building. So, when it comes down to facilities management, you don't look at, or I don't look at the, just the short-term portion of, you know, how do we fix this immediately? It's, okay, we need to fix this right now, and can we do that in-house, or do I need a contractor? And then, what do we set up for capital plan? What needs to be done first? So, you look at all of your buildings across the town, and you say, okay, which is our critical infrastructure, which buildings need to be, you know, looked at immediately, and how do we get a game plan in place to, you know, replace equipment, HVAC equipment, maybe it needs a new roof, maybe you have some ADA things that need to be met because it's a public building, and it had, you know, it's had some upgrades, but it hasn't finished that, so you really have to look at a broad scope of the entire building, find out what's the most critical, and then set a plan in place to take care of those issues.
How much experience do you have? How many years of experience? As a facilities?
So, facilities management has been three years right now.
In Berlin?
No, Berlin is two years, and then in Northborough was a year.
But Northborough, you put it as a building inspector, right? I thought you, Northborough, you are a building inspector, right?
I am a building commissioner, my job roles were combined.
Oh, okay.
John, did you think of it?
I'll think of it.
Okay.
My turn?
Yeah.
I'm good listening.
Okay, so, tell me why you want to leave Acton.
So, Acton's a little bit of further ride from Berlin north, you know, going up Route Two and so forth, I'd like to cut my commute down, something that I can do a little bit more, Acton is limited to sixteen hours a week, and eventually, Acton will be going away as of July one, to turn that into a full-time position, and with that becoming a full-time position, they have asked me to stay on as a full-time local inspector. However, that is not something I would like to do, I enjoy working in a smaller community such as Berlin, and I think that's why West Boyleson would also be a good fit for me. With working in Acton, and then wanting to be full-time, the hours are eight to five PM, all Route Two, right now, I like my commute, and I like the way things are set up, so, if I can maintain staying in the area, then that's what I would love to do, so.
What do you know about the town of West Boyleson?
So, I've been doing some research, I know that you just finished a new police building, that you're working on a senior center right now, I did go through your history, and that you were incorporated in eighteen oh eight, and I went through all the back history about the Wachusett Reservoir and so forth, I do know that you are a stretch-cold community, and I know that, at your past meeting that you just had, that they approved the marijuana facilities to come in for recreational, so, I've been making sure that I, I'm not making a decision based off of, I just want to go somewhere else, I'm making a decision on a community that I think I will fit in, and that will fit me, and in looking at that, I make sure I do my homework in my, before I make decisions.
Okay, I'm sure in your line, you've had some conflict with some businesses, can you give us an example of some of the conflicts, and how you handled it, and what the resolution was?
Sure, I always try to handle conflicts first and foremost by diffusing the situation. Every once in a while, and especially if you're dealing with a business, or sometimes even a homeowner, people are very, you know, don't mess with my stuff, this is my business, don't mess with my business, I'm making my money, you know, things like that, and rightfully so, I understand that, you know, people can get upset, sometimes when they get upset, sometimes, or most often, their demeanor will change, and sometimes get hostile. I always try to step back from that, try to renegotiate the way the conversation's going, and see if we can come to an understanding, if the individual is completely unreasonable, I usually will leave the conversation and ask if we can, you know, maybe re-establish the conversation somewhere else. But, for example, I had a issue with a gentleman that was operating a contractor business out of his own home in Berlin, it's allowed to be done in the zone that he's living in, however, it's required to have a special permit, and that special permit is to be renewed every five years. Well, he had one, and it lapsed, and he continued to work, so, complaint came in to me to investigate that under zoning complaint, so I went, investigated, sure enough, yes, the individual's doing work out of his home, and is required to have a special permit. So, first I tried to approach and have a conversation, the individual did not want to have a conversation with me, asked me to stay away from him, and he had a few choice words, so I left the situation, I went back, wrote a letter for a zoning violation, I always mail it out twofold, one goes regular mail, one goes a certified mail, so, if one comes back and they don't sign, at least the other one I will take in that they've gotten it, and then, once that goes in, usually the individual will come in and talk to me. This particular homeowner came in, and was screaming, yelling at me at my counter, I took a step back, calm voice, just spoke, told him, I understand that you're very upset right now, I would be upset if I was in your situation, there is a way through this, let me help you get to the point where you can operate your business, and this is what you have to do. After about five, ten minutes of talking to this individual, he had calmed down, relaxed, I walked him through the process of getting a special permit from the ZBA, we went through the process, he got his permit, and now he's back to work. So, that was the resolution we got, took a little while to get there, but it's, with anything, you just keep at it until you get there.
So, you said that Berlin gives you a flexible schedule?
Mm-hmm.
If something comes up and a contractor can only meet you at six o'clock, and you're scheduled in Berlin, what kind of reassurance do you have that they?
Six o'clock in the morning?
Yeah.
So, I just adjust my hours as needed, so if I have to meet somebody at six o'clock at their job site, because say they have concrete coming in for a foundation?
Right.
I will meet them there for six o'clock, will go through what they need to go through for their inspection, and then I will just head back to Berlin thereafter. Any hours that I need to make up in Berlin, I will adhere to the hours here, but when I make up my hours in Berlin, I make them up on the tail end of my day, so, it would be finishing up here and going back there.
You're saying you get into Berlin at five AM?
Yes.
What kind of work are you doing at five AM that, because I would think a lot of contractors might start at six, but I'm not too sure about five, and, you know, there are rules that you can't start your machines till seven or so, so, what are you doing?
So, ours EBA has, I was owning bylaws, say that to seven AM to seven PM. What I notice in my quiet time is between five and seven, so I come in at five o'clock, that's when I can do my plan review, I can get emails out, I can write letters, I can do some filing, I can get things squared away and situated for the day to come. Come seven o'clock, or even six-thirty, my phone starts ringing, people start coming in, you know, I start getting requests for inspections for later in the afternoon, and then I start planning my day accordingly. In Berlin, we have a lot of work going on in town, and we have about a hundred and eighty million dollars worth of build-out coming in the next five years, so, I get a lot of phone calls, I have a lot of meetings, right now, I have plans upon plans that I'm reviewing to go through multiple projects, so, and I am the only show in town, so, I have to balance my time as best as I can, to make sure that I can get my job done.
Okay, when you went to Acton, did you know it was going to be a short term, because you've only been there since May?
No, I did not, I thought it was going to be a much longer, longer process.
And, was that the first time that you actually had, like, more of a full-time and a part-time job?
No.
Because I'm kind of looking at the, it looks like you do a lot of two-years?
Yeah, actually, I was-
Positions.
Right, so, I was working in Worcester in part-time, in Northborough.
Okay.
So, that's how that was, I actually had started in Northborough in January of fifteen, it just so happened that I went from the local, which is a lower level, to a promotion of a building commissioner to go to Northborough.
Okay.
So, I took that position, learned a valuable amount of information there, between budgeting and learning how to run a department real well, had some people that kind of took me under their wing, that were seasoned department heads, I learned a lot, and have been able to capitalize on that.
So, why did you leave Northborough to go to Berlin?
Berlin just happened to offer a better opportunity.
Okay. I'll take a break, we'll let somebody else ask.
Go ahead, John. I mean, I only, so far, everything that I've heard, I like, with the exception of you're going from work in fifty-six, you're looking to go from work in fifty-six hours a week, plus meetings, to seventy-two hours a week, plus meetings. You said you're used to the schedule, but to add an additional sixteen hours a week, that gives me some pause, that your work-rest cycle is going to break down, and you're not going to be able to continue to work, and it's not going to be seventy-two hours a week, because you're going to have meetings at both towns, so it's going to be more like eighty-five hours a week.
Right.
When are you going to sleep?
Right, no, I do, I do, I do sleep, usually between ten PM at night, and about three-fifty in the morning when I wake up, so, my schedule, the way it's set up now, granted I've only, I only work four hours in Acton, but if you put in the drive time, and the time that I'm in between both Berlin and Acton currently, in the drive times and so forth, meetings and everything like that, I'm doing those hours now.
I don't think you're doing an additional sixteen above what you're being paid for, I mean, you said you've worked-
No, I get paid forty hours, whether I work forty hours or not, so if I work a hundred hours, I get paid for forty, if I work thirty-five, I get paid for forty, strictly salary in Berlin, not hourly.
Okay, so for Berlin, what you're saying is you're presently putting in more than forty hours?
Yes.
And you're going to be able to continue to offer the same services to Berlin, at what is going to have to be a reduced amount of hours, based on the number of hours in a day?
Mm-hmm, yes, I've worked out the logistics over and over, I would have never applied for the position if I did not think that I could meet the needs of both communities.
Are you the only inspector in Berlin?
Yes.
You don't have no assistants or anything?
No.
What, are you going on vacation?
I have an alternate that comes in.
And do you have a secretary?
I do, she's part-time, Monday through Thursday, eight to noon.
And, oh, go ahead. The facilities manager, roughly, do you think eight hours a week, ten hours a week is enough?
Yeah, I would say so, it depends, really, it comes down to the amount of buildings that you have in town, and the age of those buildings, you have two buildings that are pretty much brand-new right now.
And this building is, it's not that, it's probably fifteen years, something like that.
So, that's not too bad, when you start looking at buildings that are, you know, twenty-five years old, and older, that's when you start looking into the equipment, and things, the breakdown in the building, you know, your roofing structures, your HVAC equipment, you know, is it meeting the needs, is it broken down, has it passed its useful lifespan, things like that, and that's when you have to start doing your capital planning.
And you would facilitate the, not do the actual work, but just say, you know, the door needs to be replaced over here, or something like that, and you'd find somebody to do it, or-
That's correct.
Something on that idea, you know, and get a schedule to change all the filters?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I would go out and procure companies that would come out, and they would be our vendor, and with them being our vendor, I should be able to call them up and say, I have five doors that I need to have replaced here, the closure's not working, give them a whole list, maybe walk them through the facility, show them the problem areas, and then leave it to them to do the work that they've been hired to do.
Is that what you do in Berlin now?
Yes.
So, you do the same kind of setup, so you wait till you have a couple of things for somebody to do, then have somebody come in and do them all at once?
Yeah, and if there's multiple buildings that have similar issues, you know, lump them together, if it's in the budget, and it's in the funds to do the maintenance like that, and maintain the buildings, and, you know, start going through systematically, okay, today you're going to do this building, next week you're going to do this building, and so on.
So, in regards to, I think one of the concerns I have are the night meetings, because you have Berlin, you're saying you meet with two nights a week, or always?
No, no, no.
Oh.
No, it's twice a month.
For all those different groups that you said you go to?
Yeah, so, right now, the ZBA and the Energy Committee, I'm the ex-officio in the Energy Committee, those two are set in stone for me to meet on, the other ones are required as needed, Planning Board meets twice a month, and Conservation and Board of Health meet on a weekly basis, however, I don't attend those that often, it's very rare that I do, but when I'm asked to, I do.
What night does the Planning Board meet?
So, Planning Board meets on Tuesdays, yeah, and I was looking, I believe your ZBA meets on a Thursday evening here.
Not Planning Board on Wednesdays, I believe, mostly.
Mm-hmm.
And then, well, we also have the Capitol, I'm sure he would go to the Capitol and the Board, right, just to help them out with buildings?
I don't think that would have to be done at a meeting?
No.
That's more of a through email-
But if he did, it wouldn't be normal, it wouldn't be a normal thing, it'd be one time they'll invite him.
Exactly.
Okay, and then, in regards to zoning enforcement?
Mm-hmm.
What's, I know it's, in Berlin, it says you're the building commissioner, are you also the zoning enforcement?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so what, being the zoning enforcement officer, what do you do, or what would you do here in town?
So-
Would you wait for someone to file a complaint about a zoning issue, would you go out and take, make sure all our zoning is?
Yeah, so, I have found, from the communities that I've worked in, it depends- Yeah, so, so I have found from the communities that I've worked in, um, it, it depends on the policy of that community. So for example, when I worked in Northborough, it was, you know, if you drive around, you see a dumpster, you see something that doesn't meet our zoning regulations, um, stop, try to talk to somebody, if not leave your car, get the information, get in touch with somebody, try to get it done. In Berlin, the way they want, um, their setup is they want a written complaint to come in and then me to act upon that. Um, they don't want me going on somebody's property and doing investigations without some sort of written complaint and something to follow up on. So whatever the town's policy would be, if it's something, you know, you want me to drive up and down the roads and, and, and look for illegal signs and remove the signs and things like that, then that's something I would do. That was something that I did in Northborough. Um, every town has a, a different zoning bylaw and there's different ways to regulate those zoning bylaws. Um, it really comes down to whatever the, the policy is.
Okay, Raj, did you have something?
Yeah. You said you go to the ZBA meetings.
Mm-hmm.
What's going on in Berlin? Why, why do they need you for the ZBA meeting?
So with the ZBA, um, I've created a form that is a zoning interpretation form. Basically what people do is they come in, they see me, and, um, most people are looking for denial for a building permit. What I do is instead of going through all that extra work of reading through their plans, finding out what's wrong, telling them that, no, you can't do this, instead of that, I try to, try to help the individual rather than kinda always tell them that they can't do something. So they bring their information in to me. I, on the form it says, um, the property address, what's the current use of the property, single-family home? What's the proposed use? What do you want to do? Then they give me their contact information. Then what I do is I take that form, I go through our zoning bylaws cover to cover, and I find out whatever pertains to it. I tell you the map and parcel, zoning district it's in, and then these articles apply here for that proposed use. And if you need to go to, one, it's a law by right, no, it's prohibited, uh, the ZBA Planning Board, I have that all down. If it's in an overlay district, I talk about that. By the end, it's all filled out, I sign, date it. They use that as part of their submittal to the ZBA or to the Planning Board for a decision that they're looking for. And then what happens is that makes life easier for the members on the ZBA to read through that. They already have all the articles and sections of the, uh, bylaw that pertains to what these people are looking to, to achieve. And then that, that person can make a decision as a board member to say, okay, this, this fits in with what we're looking for. This is your hardship, I see that. And then they can go through and vote and, and make a pertinent decision. I'm there in case they have a question about my zoning determination and if they need additional information. Because usually through the process of somebody coming in to go to the ZBA or the Planning Board, I will meet them, uh, several times, they'll come in and sit with me, they'll show me their package, they'll show me where they've progressed and if there's anything that they missed. Um, what I really emphasize is, is customer service. I want people to come in and be able to get serviced from the community in which they live or work or, or would like to live and, and be able to achieve something. I have always worked so that people are not hindered by my job. My job is not to, um, rule with an iron fist, so to speak. Um, I find part of my job or the majority of my job is public education. Um, I need to educate you on our zoning bylaws, I need to educate you on building code and what are the requirements are. And then I need to help you meet those requirements. If we can't meet those requirements, unfortunately that's the way it is. But if we can meet those, let's see how we can work together to get your project complete.
So on, only when you deny the permit, then they will go to the ZBA? That's the time you need to go to the ZBA, right?
I, yes, I will go, yeah.
So do you have to go to every ZBA meetings or once, only once required?
No, I, I go to every ZBA meeting.
Why?
It's, it's just worked out well that way. It helps constant communication with the Board. Because sometimes they come up with a question that may have not been asked.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's times I just, I'm there, present without having to answer any questions.
How do you compensate that time when you go to the meetings?
So that's, that's comp time. So if I, if I work anything over forty hours, it's considered comp time.
Have you, uh, had any experience with a forty B project?
Yes, several.
In Berlin?
Yep, we, uh, we have one that's finishing up right now. We just had another one-
How big it is?
So we have a thirty-six building, single-family homes is going in there. Uh, we have another one that just went through the process and is going to be twelve homes. Um, they're looking at another one that's thirty-four homes, has not been approved yet, but they're going through it.
Okay, thank you. So, I don't know if, if Padrae would-
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the way our building commissioners have been working is they have their set hours, plus then, in addition to their set hours, they're required to come to these meetings above and beyond their set hours. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so the thirty-two hours could be thirty-seven hours. Now it, does that, do they get, that's part of their job that they do not get compensated for, correct?
Depends on how we negotiate a contract.
That's how currently has been.
Yes.
So what would your expectation be if we had you come to a meeting and you're here for two hours? Traditionally, the building inspector gets paid for the thirty-two hours and any meetings they have to attend have been part of the job that, and it's understood that, that's part of, that even though the contract is for thirty-two hours, it's a salary, it's thirty-two hours plus these other meetings. Uh, is that your understanding of, uh, okay?
Yeah, that's, that's normal. For me, that's normal. When I, uh, was hired in, in Northborough, it was, uh, forty hours and meetings. Uh, they didn't offer comp time. Berlin is completely opposite.
Okay.
They say forty hours, you go to these meetings, but you're considered comp time for going to the extra meetings. Doesn't mean I get paid for it, but that means I can utilize that time at some other point to utilize, whether it be doctor's appointments or something along that line.
And just so you're clear, I mean, here it would be-
Just like Northborough.
Just, yes.
Yep.
So can you use that comp time towards your weekly, uh, time?
Yes, that's correct. Right.
The time off?
Yes.
Yeah. And I noticed-
That's what help, helps me balance my month's worth of work. You know, is having that extra comp time. Like, I went through my comp time today, I have three hundred and eighty-nine hours of comp time that I've accrued so far. It's just I haven't used it, you know?
So if you wanted to, you could take a week, two weeks off, paid, and that would be, play your thing.
Yep.
Yeah, use it.
Oh, yeah, and that's how they're doing it there.
That's how they do it there, right.
But here it will be different.
So will you, will you, are you planning on staying as the alternate Northbridge building inspector?
I mean, I have been for years. I haven't been utilized. There's, there's like three alternates there, so. I mean, if, unless it's an issue, I can just come off of that.
No.
That was, that was usually like, um, you know, hey, I'm going on vacation, I got an inspection on Monday, can you take care of it for me?
Correct, that's the same with Beas.
Yeah.
Um, you said that you go to Planning Board meetings too?
Yes.
What role, you explain what you did with the ZBA. Can you explain your role with the Planning Board?
So my, my role as a Planning Board, um, basically helps, um, with my expertise in zoning, actually. So when they're formulating new zoning bylaws or they're looking to change zoning districts, um, it's, my experience so far has been very beneficial, not only for myself, but for the Planning Board, to give them feedback on, okay, you're developing a new bylaw. Well, let me give you a little insight on how I can actually enforce that bylaw or what things might- Because there's sometimes they'll, they'll say, this is what we wanna pursue as a bylaw and there's a conflict between another bylaw and I, I can sometimes help regulate that. Um, so that's been helpful there, but usually I sit in the gallery in the back and I don't answer questions unless asked. Um, you know, I, I will attend them, especially if they have, uh, new projects coming up. We have a couple of fifty-five and over communities coming in, um, in a few overlay districts that they wanted me to be part of, so I went to those meetings. Um, the Planning Board meetings, again, are not, uh, guaran- like a mandatory, you have to be at every Planning Board meeting, it's as needed.
Okay, so the form that you said that you had, um, let's, you talked about a house. I, I walk in, I'm thinking about bringing a new business to the town of West Ballston.
Mm-hmm.
My first stop would be to go to you so I can get ready. If, if I'm listening and hearing what I think I'm hearing from you, you would help me get prepared to go to the Planning Board and the ZBA and, and tell me any other things I need to do. So when I'm going to this meeting, I know what is expected of me and that process can move along faster?
Yeah, usually that's, that's exactly it. I want, I would like people to come in, you tell me what you would like to do, what you currently have for a situation, what you're looking to do. And then I, I can give you right up front, you know, either, you know, you're going in the wrong direction, we, this isn't gonna work for you because it's just prohibited in that area, or if there's a way that you can get a special permit or a variance or something along that line. Um, but usually I have people come in, we meet with me first, tell me what you'd like to do and let's see if we can make it work for you. If, if it, you know, if it can't work, then at least you know that ahead of time and maybe you can, you know, think of something else that you might wanna do.
How does a potential new business know that?
So usually come in and ask to sit with me on a, on a zoning meeting.
Okay.
You know, and I'll, I'll sit down with the individual and, you know, we can spend a half hour, go through the zoning bylaws and figure out if it's something that fits for them in their area where they wanna do the business.
Okay, so let's say, um, something happens and there's no heat in this building one day. I don't know, Nancy or the town administrator calls you. What is the first thing that you would do to deal with that?
So we'd come in and, and I'd wanna take a look at the, the systems first and see if there's anything that's, you know, not functioning or, um, I don't know if there's an analytical system here, I'd, I'd have to get into it and, and learn a little bit more about the systems here. Um, but first and foremost, you know, is it a blur issue where, you know, the, the fan motor's not working right now? Or is it a thermostat issue where the regulator's not working right now? Uh, dampers aren't opening or closing? It's things like that that you have to kinda work through. And then, again, setting up the right vendors in place to come out and service that, somebody that you can call on an emergency basis and say, listen, the heat in the municipal building is down, you know, can you come out here and do a diagnostic? This is where we think we're having the issue. Um, and for an example of that, in Berlin, we implemented that analytics system and the HVAC equipment on that building is over twenty years old. So we were having an issue actually where the, the building air was cold. Um, and we went through it and we were working with our vendors and I logged into the computer system. And even though it was demanding heat and they, rooms were set to be at seventy degrees, the supply air was sixty-five degrees. So people are like, oh, the AC's blowing on me all day. Well, of course it is, because you're blowing sixty-five degree cold air, trying to get it to seventy, it's just not gonna happen. So we had to change the temperature of the supply air to a hundred and ten degrees so that it would meet that need and drop the temperature. So when it hit seventy, the system shut down. Cause what happens is, and that's all through our Energy Committee process and becoming a green community is learning how these energy audits work and what works best with the systems. So in turn, we've been able to save money on our energy costs by taking these systems and, and making them function as efficient as possible at the age that they're at.
Would you see yourself in this position trying to fix something on-site? Or is that when you'd look for, evaluate the issue and then get something?
So it, it would be more of an evaluation and, and if there's something simple such as like the analytics, I can jump onto the computer, change the setting, and then that's it, it's done, I can do that. If it's something where I gotta take something apart and, and do a mechanical fix, I'm not gonna get into that. I would have somebody, you know, I'd wanna have a vendor on, come and do that.
You mentioned that you work with the DPW over in Berlin, I believe?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So does that mean if, uh, door's falling off the hinges, you call them and they go fix it? Or can you give us an idea of what that connection is?
Yeah, so, so on occasion, if it's something small like that, you know, we're having a problem with the door handle or something, the guys will come over and make an adjustment. Um, if it's filter replacement for the HVAC equipment, they'll come over and take care of that. Um, minor maintenance type stuff.
Okay.
Um, you know, their main focus is, is working on the roads and, you know, making sure that that stays working well. That's their first priority.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Our, our only connection with, I believe, the buildings in the DPW are outside.
Yeah.
Lawns, you know, things like that, nothing, as of right now, nothing inside the buildings.
Yeah.
As a builder commissioner, are you in charge of the gas, plumbing, electric? Do they all report to you?
Yes.
So if, if there's an issue with one of them, you'd handle it?
Yes. Yeah, I'm a department head.
Do they allow adult to use marijuana in Berlin?
Yep, they just approved it, so we're gonna be getting a-
They're familiar with that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, uh, I was telling Anita just a little while ago, um, at one of my building official meetings, we toured a facility at six forty Lincoln Street, um, that is a grow facility with processing and then it's got retail for, um, and dispensary for medical and recreational, as well as paraphernalia. And this facility's unbelievable, the way it's, it's set up and locked down, the security's crazy, but.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Anita, is there anything that you have that we might have missed?
Just one question. When it comes to the green communities, have you been working with, with the town of Berlin to identify what projects might be eligible for competitive grant rounds?
Yes, yep, we're, we're working on that right now. One of the, uh, big initiatives that we were able to get through was our, um, street lighting. We just went through a big package with that and we're finalizing that right now. But, um, yes, we've been working very close.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I'm also, um, on some of that stuff too, like in the building department, I'm implementing new permitting software that will help, one, the software that we have right now is horrible and the new software that we have coming in is, um, made by Viewpoint. And, um, they're fantastic and we'll be up and running in probably about three weeks. Right now we just have to do the data transfer. But I, I try to look at modernizing and streamlining so that things run very efficiently and, um, that I have a full background on, on everything, so people get taken care of, customer service.
Okay, and I, the Director from the Library is here with a few members of the Board. Does the Director have any questions in regards to, I'm, I'm assuming Facility can step forward?
Hi, I'm Ashawn, Library Director. Um, so I'm just here to hear about the, um, facilities. We have a, a library that is over a hundred years old and also that our addition is about one years old. A lot of maintenance issues that are coming to a head. And, um, I'm just interested to hear how managed that is. I heard some about what you were doing in Berlin. Have you worked with the library there?
As a matter of fact, we are. Um, right now our library is ninety years old and we unfortunately just had our septic system fail. So we're looking at, um, fixing that first, um, foremost, because they wanna put an addition onto that building. Um, and the building also needs an improvement and some accessibility issues that need to be addressed. Um, so first and foremost, because nobody can be in the building if you can't utilize a septic system. So that's the first thing on our plate, is to get that taken care of sooner than later. I know they are working towards some grants, so I've been working with the Library Director on the grants that he wants to get, to put the addition on and do some upgrades to the building. Um, and you're helping him to facilitate some of that stuff. Um, I find it's, it's easiest when you're working on a particular project is to get the departments involved with your building, um, so, such as the library, police department, things like that. They wanna find out what your needs are, what you, your future hopes are of the building and then how can you address that in a timely and appropriate manner without, you know, booming the budget?
Yeah, that's, that's the issue. We have a long list of things that you need to help, to try to figure out what, what comes first.
Sure.
If, from those questions, does anybody on the Board have any other questions?
Oh, the money is something we would negotiate.
We would negotiate that.
That's a difference.
One, one other question.
Okay.
If you were to be offered the job, um, how quickly would you be able to start here?
I could start as soon as the thirteenth of November.
And, um- Two-week notice.
And I, I would just ask, because Nancy kinda runs this building. Nancy, do you have any questions you'd ask that you'd wanna ask this gentleman because of that, part of it, you know, the facilities?
Uh, I liked what I heard.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll, um, just have him step back and then discuss if we need to. And then we can ask him other questions if they come up. Is that the best process or?
Um, it's just an open meeting and, you know, you, you're, um, you have the ability to have discussion whether, um, Joe is willing to step out and let the Board have some candid discussion or he's, because it's open, he could technically sit and stay.
Whatever the Board would rather-
Watch on TV afterwards anyways.
You can watch it.
Exactly.
You can just step back, I guess, if we have any questions.
Thank you.
I don't know why you'd want it.
Thank you.
In regards to what we just talked about, does anybody have any discussion in regards to this or any thoughts that they wanna bring forward?
Well, I would, I gotta say, I'm very impressed. Um, extremely well-spoken, extremely knowledgeable. And, um, I'm impressed with every aspect, we, every question we ask him, he answered us, which is something that usually doesn't happen. So I was very impressed.
To piggyback on what John's saying, not only did he answer them, I liked the answers that I heard, uh, they were the right answers. My only concern, as I said before, is how long can someone work seventy-two hours a week plus meetings? Um, until you burn out.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Yep, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, you know, my, he's, I'm, I'm also impressed by his qualifications as well as the experience. The only concern I have is I'm echoing Mr. Crowley's consent. So, you know, this is a, you know, his, what, if he comes as- So, you know, this is a, you know, his work, if he comes as a full-time here, no problem. But, working in another community full-time, and again, thirty-two, forty, fifty hours, so that, and also, you need to run the family too. So, it's too much and too quick to, you might get burned out. That is, and also, you know, in this town, you know, morning, seven, seven to nine, that's a, uh, you know, the taxpayers, they do deserve a good timings or continuous timings for the building inspector in the, in town. Yes, I agree, now, one thirty to seven, you will be here, but the contractors will be gone after three o'clock, you know? So, everything is done. So, the only concern I have is the timing, all of the things have.
So, he said in his, in his hours, that you seven, early in the morning for-
I totally agree, that's only two days, but it's only a couple of hours. So, uh, you know, is that enough for the town, you know?
Well, in, in inspection-wise, I think it's plenty, because, you know, you're doing inspection, it takes, I don't know, takes you longer to get to, to site than it does to do the actual inspection in most cases.
But the contractors, they do come in and, they do their business in the morning.
Right, but you, you, once you get to know what days he's here, that's when the contracts come in. Like he said, if someone needs a poor concrete foundation, on Monday morning at seven o'clock, he's going to be there at six o'clock, no matter, he'll make ways to get there to do it. I mean, I, I thought it was a, you know, I, every, every job's going to be on probation, I would assume anyhow, so, I don't see what we have to lose by hiring him, by trying him myself, is my opinion.
Well, also in regards to the hours, I mean, I'm sure that he could make arrangements if a, if a builder says, you know, I'm nuts this week, I can only meet on Thursday. I mean, I'm sure he said he can be a little flexible. But, again, I guess I'm concerned, the same concern. Seventy-two hours a week is fourteen-hour days, over fourteen-hour days for five days a week. Six days, it's even over a twelve-hour day to make everything work.
In addition to that, uh, meetings.
Addition to, I guess, I guess, I'd say, I guess I'd say addition to meetings and drive time um, from Berlin to here, you know, that's, it's still a little bit of time, so.
We have the, some of the projects coming in.
That turns a fourteen, fourteen-hour week into fifteen or sixteen-hour drive time.
The one.
So, do you have anything to add?
Um, Mr. Achu, I really like the details of the answers that you gave. Um, you sound like you've been doing this, and I know there's some concerns on the hours, but it sounds like you've got a really good handle on it. And a lot of times when you ask for details, you don't get those details in the answers, and I really thought you stepped up to the plate, so I am highly impressed. And I really like that form that you were talking about, because if somebody's new coming into town, and whether it's business or a new building of, you know, personal housing or whatever, that form seems like it could help everybody, including our boards. Um, so, I, I particularly like that, and I hope we're able to work something out.
Thank you.
I guess the only question I'd ask the board is what I just said about hours. Fourteen-hour days with drive time and night meetings.
That's one.
I agree that everything I heard tonight was excellent.
Excellent, yeah.
But the only thing I'm concerned about is what does the board think about over fourteen-hour days and night meetings, and I'll call for, that, I, I guess that would be my only concern.
Well, my concern, my only answer to that is what do we have to lose by trying?
Uh, now, what do we, yeah, I don't know, a temporary, a temporary contract, or how would, how would we do that? Uh, I don't want, I don't want to give him a contract, and then after six months, say, it's not working, and then we have to move the process to fire him, or to give him.
So, within any employment, whether it's an at-will or it's a contractual employment, um, we give a, typically, we give a six-month probation. And so, you evaluate the performance of that individual during the first six months, and if everything's looking good, then you continue on through the rest of the term of the contract. Or if within that six months you start to have concerns, you can terminate that employee really for no cause. You have the ability to say it's not working, uh, thank you very much, we'll try something else. So, that provision would stay whether we, you know, we're hiring, um, a, an hourly employee or if we're hiring a contractual employee. So, there's really no concern about, you know, our ability to terminate an employee if it's just not working out. We have that right, whether it's, um, hourly or contractual.
I, I agree with John. I, I mean, it is a lot of hours, I, military people do it on a regular basis, I, so I know what it's like. Um, I, and I, I think we have nothing to lose by moving forward. And if Mr. Achu feels that he can hold down that schedule, who am I to say, you know, I'm not going to give you a chance because I don't think you can?
That's right, I totally agree, Mr. Crowley.
Do you think, uh, the contract means, you know, do we have to sign one year, two year, three year? How the, how many years of contract, how do you?
With past building inspectors, you've started with a one-year contract? But you have the same, whether you do a one-year contract or a three-year contract, you still have that same provision-
Six, six months.
Of the six months probation.
May I say one thing?
Sure.
Uh, just looking at this as a long-term thing, and I've had conversations with my family before I even put my resume forward, um, I'm looking at this, working in your community here, uh, for the next five to ten years. That's my timeframe that I have in my head. That's what I've talked about with my family, and we're all on board. So, I just want you to understand that before you finalize your decision, that I'm not into this so that, like, you think I'm out here in six months or whatever. I want a, a long-term commitment here.
Go ahead.
And just one, you know, reminder to the board that you do have the other applicant. We have, um, our interim building inspector, George Tigner, is also interested in the position, and, you know, you've reviewed his, um, performance, he's doing well as the interim, um, but he is limited in terms of the number of hours he can currently provide the town, and he does not have the ability to provide the facility maintenance oversight the way you were looking. So, while he's doing a, a good job, that would be something that you would need to weigh in giving consideration to George Tigner for the position as compared to what you're hearing, uh, from, from Joe Achu tonight.
I personally think we need to put both jobs, facilities and the building commissioner as one job. So, I would, uh, I would ask the board, allow Anita to enter into negotiation with, uh, Mr. Achu to come to a contract?
I'll second it.
Okay, have we, um, in regards to, have we looked into the possibility of, I know we've talked about it, but have we looked into the possible of the DPW director helping out with the facility side?
I've spoken to our current DPW director, and to be honest, he's not interested in adding that to his duties. It's outside of the scope of his job description.
Well, the, the job description would need to be changed, obviously.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, so, has it been presented that way?
I've discussed it with him, he was, he did not have strong interest in making that type of change.
Did you have anything else?
No. I think, you know, I heard it differently. Uh, if he is compensated, he might be interested.
Well, I mean, I don't know how we would expect they had to change his job description and not compensate him.
The thing is, you know, the thing is, he did, he has experience, the, period experience in mass devotee as a facilities manager. So, that's one thing, you know, we could explore, whether he is really interested. So, my conversation with him is, you know, as a DPW director, you, you, he, he won't be doing it with, along with the DPW director for free, but if he is co- if the things changes, and if he's compensated, yes. That's my understanding.
As, as discussion on this motion, I think that the building, whether or not the DPW director has the ability or wants to be the facilities manager, the jobs don't really marry together. The building inspector and the facilities manager are, you know, they're both inside for the most part, you know, or not the most part, but they deal with buildings. The DPW director is mainly dealing with outside parks and, and highways. So, the two jobs are not complementary, whereas a building inspector being the facilities manager, they're complementary positions, they fit, they mesh better together than a DPW director and a facilities manager.
I totally agree with you, at the same time. So, we are ca- I know that, you know, there is shortage of building inspectors, and we are looking for a building inspector with the facilities experience. So, we are not finding anyone to come in as a full-time person to our town, so to provide a better service for our taxpayers. So, are we this desperate to hire a, another full-time, working as someone, working in another full-time job with this many hours of, you know, additional hours for our town? So, that's the only concern I have. If you are, if the, if the DPW director works for, you know, until the, on interim position or temporary, so we could find us, you know, another candidate.
I don't think it's desperate at all, I think it's not for the town.
I agree.
I agree. We've got a good candidate, we've got a motion on the table.
And it's open for discussion, so.
Right, right.
So, we do it.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm, I'm giving my views, that's all, yeah.
So, um, we have a motion in a second. Um, we can vote, uh, we can vote on that, and then I, all I would ask is that the, uh, because we still have to negotiate a contract with this gentleman and a pay and things like that. I would just ask the town administrator to talk to the building inspector, to the DPW director, in case in, in a week or whenever you talk to him, that we're, we're not in the, in the right place with this contract, that we have something to fall back on. Um, because we already have somebody we can, uh, talk to about the building department, this gentleman that can work so many hours, but.
Right.
Yeah, so, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, um, Anita, you will meet with Joseph?
We'll be in touch with Joe, and we will work on the terms of a proposed contract, which we can bring back to the board at the November seventh meeting.
That would be in the executive session, do we have, would that be executive session?
It, it doesn't need to be an executive session, I mean, at this point, there, you've had open discussion. Um, if it's pre-negotiated, I, I don't see that it would require executive session, it could be.
Okay, so, I think we have one set next Wednesday.
For another purpose, we could add it to.
And we also, for the board to know, we have to have a quick building meeting at six o'clock and a executive session at six fifteen.
Six thirty.
And I have spoke to John about that, so we can move that forward.
Okay. On Wednesday, the seventh, correct?
Correct.
I think that, uh, we should meet in executive session about this first, for, for the money-wise, don't we have to do?
I, that's what I was wondering, maybe if, I guess if you come, if you come with a, something you agree upon, we can talk about it in an open session? Why don't you, we, we decide before next, next week how the best process?
With, with anything, it's, you go into executive session if it's determined to be in the best interest of the town, that if you feel that by having it be an open discussion, it would be detrimental to reaching a decision. So, you know, if everything goes well and, you know, terms are easily reached, it could go either way. But by scheduling it as an executive session, it provides you that ability in case things still need to be fine-tuned.
So, schedule it in, in regards to the motion that we made.
The way we're meeting at, the meeting starts at six.
Six o'clock, for building, six thirty, we'll start executive session.
Executive session.
Okay, um, nothing else, so entertain a motion.
Motion, Greg, Jim? No, I, I'm good.
Second.
Question?
Don't just be negative.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.